This is a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.
Good evening and welcome to the Brighton Central School District Board of Education Education Meeting for May 7th, 2019. To begin this evening as our normal custom, we offer the opportunity for public participation. Any members of the public that are here with us in attendance are welcome to address the board with a question or a comment or make a brief statement. We ask that you raise your hand, be recognized. I'll ask you to move to the podium and please give us your name and address. Is there anyone here in attendance who wishes to address the board at this point? Okay, seeing that we have no one this evening for public participation, board members, may we have a motion, please, to approve the agenda for this evening?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Larry, seconded by Karen. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion, please, for approval of the minutes from our April 23rd, 2019 education meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Marv and seconded...
Andrea.
By Andrea, thank you. Does anyone have any corrections to those minutes, additions or deletions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. So tonight, we're going to hear from Nate Merritt and some of our folks in the Physical Education Department. This year is one of our curriculum reviews has covered physical education program. So, welcome Nate and company.
First off, I just want to say thank you for having us. This has been a wonderful experience with my council staff. We have Crystal Forsythe, Kristen Cooper and Jason Wasserman with me tonight. I'd also like to thank Julie Muller, Sarah Feltes, Rob Thomas and Marc Antonovich for also giving contributions to the review. Really, our goal was just to look at our overall program and see where we were and where we wanted to go. Just taking a quick look, this is kind of our bible for what we do in physical education. It's a New York State standard. So everything that we are doing really has to fall within one of these, you know, one of these pillars. So everything that we looked at in our review and our data, we kind of threw into these pillars to see, you know, what is best for our program. Over the last two years, we've had the opportunity to really spend some quality time looking at our curriculum, looking at how it aligns from K, you know, K to 1 and all the way up to 12, to make sure that we're doing the right thing from, you know, the groundwork for kids all the way to what we want a graduate to have when they leave the high school level as far as a physical education student. And again, you know, looking at our state and national standards to see what we're doing and how it meets those standards. Looking at the review process, what we did first was really what we do well. A little different approach is because I think right now we have a really, really talented group of young professionals that are doing a great job. So we really looked at, okay, things that we're doing well, how can we improve on those first and foremost? Identify areas that obviously need improvement, you know, how much time we would need, gathering data from all of our stakeholders as to their opinions and their take on certain ideas that we might have. And then, of course, last is kind of what we're bringing you to tonight is, you know, how do we go about improving those areas? Data points for the review, what we had was a couple surveys. So we had a K-5 parent survey, which Dan Goldman can tell you had a great response. I think, you know, almost 200 submissions, which is a great, it's great for us. We got great data and you'll hear from both Crystal and Kristen about that data and how we kind of use that to guide what we were doing for our recommendations. We did a student survey at the middle school and high school level, which was really helpful for both parents and students. It's, you'll hear from Jason tonight. It's interesting to hear the difference of opinion between a middle school student and a middle school parent about what they want from their education. So, but otherwise, you know, these are kind of our jumping off points. We also really took a look at closely at our higher ed models in the area, very closely to Broadport and best practices that they're using and what, you know, the teachers, new teachers coming out of college institutions right now are coming out with as their jumping off point to see what best practices for right now. Moving into our recommendations, really what we wanted to do and our vision for this as a group was really to have something K-12 that we could all buy into, to say over the next course of how many years, we're all going to be focusing on this K-12. And really what that comes back to is increasing activity, okay? We could probably do that in every review we ever do for physical education to say that we want to increase physical activity for kids. You know, 1 in 3 students in America are considered obese. Looking at, you know, how much time our kids are moving in physical education, but not only physical education, but also recess time. How can we creatively look at our day that our kids are spending in school to get them active and moving so that they live healthy lifestyles? And again, you know, just using some of our data points, almost 100% of our parents really thought that this was important as well. So again, the buy-in's there. We all know the facts and the science is there. So really just again, taking this as a K-12 recommendation for increasing physical activity time. The second for our K-12 recommendations is to increase fitness levels. So very similar to the top one. What we do now is, you know, kids warm up in classes. We do physical, you know, fitness assessments, things like that. But really, we want to put a broader approach on that to really have kids gather their baselines, set targets and set goals for the year. This allows them to see improvement. This allows them to kind of self-motivate themselves within, you know, our curriculum. And again, leading to taking these things as they graduate as 12th graders, taking them into living a healthy lifestyle. I'll turn it over to Kristen and Crystal for the K-5 recommendations.
Hello, I'm Kristen Cooper and I teach at Council Rock, which is kindergarten through 2nd grade. What we, one of the main focuses that we found out is that 60% of the parents from our survey said that they were unaware that technology was being used in physical education. That's something that I know at our level that we've been trying to do. We currently now have like daily videos where we use 2nd graders to be leaders to demonstrate the activities that are going to be happening throughout the day. We also found that cut down on instruction time. So now the kids are having more activity time. Even 2 to 3 minutes can help our kids. So some of the ways that we've been adding technology currently in our building is, like I said, the video of the day. We've also been adding nutritional videos throughout lessons when we're teaching nutrition. We've been using different apps with timers and Tavada timers, maybe things to help us pick partners. So it's easier where everybody's working with everybody and the app syncs that. And it takes some of those things that kind of cause some problems or could hurt feelings picking partners, so that helps us out. And some of the things that we also been using is the Seesaw way to communicate with parents. With this, we've been able to send individual videos or classroom videos of what the kids are doing in our curriculum and now the parents can see it firsthand. And also, we've been using electronic newsletters through like Tap and Times or also through our PE website to show the parents what we're doing. So our recommendation for the future is to continue to show the parents what we are doing. Try to promote our curriculum and physical activity using the technology ways that we do have now, but then also looking what best practices are doing outside of our school district or new ideas that we can innovate what we're doing in our school district.
Great, thank you.
I'm Crystal Forsythe. I teach phys ed at French Road, that's grades 3 through 5. And kind of touching on communication, piggybacking off what Kristen said, it was really nice to see the feedback from the parents on the survey saying that they would like to hear more specific feedback about their students, not just a generic, oh, they're doing great or yes, they can kick a ball. But we know in education, especially physical education, we're working on social skills, we're working on physical skills, cognitive, also trying to motivate them to stay active outside of school. So the more we can do to collaborate with families saying this is what we're doing. I'm so proud of the work I'm doing with my students. I should be celebrating it more and I could be doing that through blurbs, through Dr. Rio's weekly emails home, sending videos, starting to use Seesaw. We've been experimenting with different forms of assessment, trying to look at the report cards that will hopefully be changing in the next few years. I've been to a few of those committee meetings, trying to figure out how we can move assessment forward with phys ed so that it's more meaningful when the parents are looking at it and understanding, I see what you're doing well, let's continue to try to do more of this at home. What are some things we can do to grow? You know, it's not just can I kick a ball, can I throw a ball? You know, am I being a good person when I'm trying to be active with my classmates? Am I remembering that I can try to do this at home? Am I remembering that she talked about summer rec programs? It's hitting standard 3 with New York State. Am I being safe? Am I proud of myself? Am I making somebody else feel good about what they're doing? So this year, we've been trying a couple different generic assessments that are not specific to throwing a ball. But it's what are we doing during this lesson that I can assess the same way all year? So we've been experimenting with that, trying to get it ready for the upcoming report card changes in the next few years. And it also hits on what the parents said in the survey. We want to hear more specific feedback. So that's really been going in a great, great direction. And it's nice, it's nice to know with the communication with parents that they do want to communicate more. And with technology, the way it is today, we're always going to want to be ever-evolving, staying with the current transfer communication, figuring out what is the best way to communicate home. And we will hopefully continue to strive to do that and change as we need to as the years go on to do that, keep the bridge connected between families, community, teachers, continue to do what's best for the kids, which is motivate them to be excited about activity outside of school. So, thank you.
Great.
Thank you. Jason's going to step up and do our 6-12 recommendations.
All right, Jason Wasserman, I teach over at TCMS, 6th through 8th. First thing on the list there is explore the best situation where students changing in physical education. Right now, as it is, 7th and 8th graders do change. 6th graders actually do not. We started that a couple of years ago. We had the big bubble come through and we did not have enough lockers actually for all the students in our building. And it was something we had talked about doing for a little while. A lot of it had to do with anxiety. 6th graders, they had to come in there, they learn one locker combination, they had to learn where everything is in the school, et cetera. So just taking something off their plate. They didn't have to bring an extra set of clothes and as long as they remembered their sneakers and they had some safe gym wear, we thought it'd be all right. And it's really gone, it's gone really well for the 6th graders. They come over from French Road, they're in that same routine and they know how to go from there. So we're exploring ideas of possibly bringing that up through the 7th and 8th grade as well. We gained about 6 minutes, 6 to 10 minutes of class time by not having the kids change. It takes, you know, it takes out that locker room piece and some stuff in there and, you know, they're sitting for a long time throughout the day. So gaining 6 to 10 minutes of class time could be huge for those kids, especially 3 times a week and you're up to, you know, a good number, good amount of time that they can be active and moving around. And it gives us a couple more minutes of instruction time. The high school has gone to, actually an option. They give them the option if they want to change and then they may do so and they give them a spot to go and take care of that. And then they also have kids that, because they don't want to get in the way of them performing in phys ed class, as long as they come in phys ed clothes, they are ready to go. And they do that as well. And they don't, they don't want a barrier set in keeping kids from being active. If they want to be active, you know, as long as they are wearing something that's proper for phys ed, then they're able to do that. So like all, we're just going to continue to analyze and move through that and see if we can gain some minutes, lessen the anxiety all the way through. The second thing we looked at was coeducational classes and what it looked like about the middle school and the high school level. First of all, the high school, 11, 12 is already coed. They have different options to which they can choose. But the 6 through 10 are not coed as of right now. In the survey that we explored, the, it was 75% of people were against going coed completely. But we have tried to implement a few things along the way. Rob actually and Mike Malloy have, he made a class this year that was a coed class to test out a 6th grade, see what we could do. I've taken notes all year long. That way, we can start to implement some things or some things I like, some things I think we could change as we move forward. Some of our units now are coed and we're trying to, you know, implement some things there and then also keep some things separate as they are, as some things are working really well for us in the other direction as well. Thanks.
And again, just touching on the 2 from 6-12, I think the changing piece, I think as we look at anxiety and mental illness becoming tougher and tougher in our current society, we look at changing as really being an obstacle right now. And especially at the high school level that we really feel that that, that holding a child back from being physically active and being successful in our content area really doesn't make sense for us. So what can we do to provide a situation for our kid to be successful that might not include going into the locker room and changing clothes? We can really be creative with that solution and what that might look like. And as far as the coeducational, that's just really an opportunity. We've seen some successes in, you know, in our 11, 12 program, really of the difference between just a male phys ed class and kids having to problem solve in a large group setting, you know, in a coeducational system. And we've seen some benefits to that. So I think really what we're looking at there is to see where we can really implement this a little bit more because of the success we've already seen. And, you know, like Jason spoke to, you know, trying it out at the middle school level was a great experience and I think we learned a lot this year and we'll take that as we move forward. Continued work and so lastly, you know, each year we're going to look, continue to look at our curriculum, see how effective it was and adjust accordingly. I think one of the big things that's happened in the 3 years that I've been with the district is getting the talented professionals, the professional development that they need. So that's something that I think we have committed to as a staff and as a department to really get what they need to bring back to their classes, to be cutting edge, to be, you know, really on top of their game, to really refresh them. Because I think that that really helps them to stay motivated. But more importantly, I've seen some great things from professional development over the last couple of years that have been right back in our classroom the next day. And I'm excited about that. And lastly, you know, we ask our kids all the time to take risks. And I would say that same thing to all of them is that I want to encourage them to continue to take risks, continue to try new things. Because I think, you know, we're on a really good path with a really talented department and I think these recommendations will be leading us into the future.
Great. Super. Questions? Is anybody having questions for the group or?
I would just say that gaining 6 to 10 minutes of instructional time seems like a huge benefit, especially for middle school kids who no longer have recess. Like that, I hadn't really thought of it from that perspective.
And I think also, I think I expressed to you Nate one time, this conundrum of changing for phys ed class has been forever. And all of us that have older children, I mean, we can, grade specific, but it's, there are a lot of things around that that on the surface seem, why is this an issue? And certainly one of those being the amount of time it takes to get a class ready to participate. So I appreciate the entirety of the staff looking at that closely and trying to figure out ways that you can still run effective sessions and provide more time and less anxiety for students. I think that's a real plus. So Christina, did you have any?
Yeah, I was just wondering what kind of work you're doing around wellness? Because sometimes my kids will come home and they'll say that they tried something in phys ed that's sort of around holistic wellness and I just want to know more about.
Yeah, I think we're, I think at all of our levels. And I would definitely speak to the K-5 group right now. Continuing to look at how we can infuse wellness in everything that we do, you know, and have discussions based on, you know, if we're physically active to talk about all the other intangibles of what the holistic, you know, wellness approach is. So I, we're trying our, as busy as our days are and as little time as we have with them, we are trying to infuse it as much as possible to have good talking points. I'm glad, I'm happy to hear that it's coming home. You know, that some of those conversations are hitting home because they're the ones that are kind of really being creative with their time. And during the warm-up activity, are they, are they interjecting something about like healthy habits and healthy eating habits and stress management, all of the above? So anytime that we can kind of interject, you know, just good quality conversations when we have a really targeted audience is great for us and so kudos to them for sure.
Right. Yeah, because Jolene and I serve on the Wellness Committee and we've sat with groups from phys ed who, in other areas. But it's, we worked on that type of thing probably 2 or 3 years ago. I remember sitting on Crystal at least. And so it's good to hear that it's, we've done, we've talked about it and now it's happening and it's coming home.
Yeah, we're actually seeing. This is great. Good to hear.
Well, thank you for your lead Nate, Kristen, Crystal and Jason. Thank you for representing the entirety of the staff. And as always, thank you to the entire physical education staff to take a deep dive and be self-reflective and take a look at what it is we do now and continue to get better at it and find things that work better for students. So we appreciate that and thank you very much for coming tonight.
Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Yep. And I remind folks at home that we do, under Dr. Baker, we usually review curriculum involving approximately 3 different subject areas every single year and it's a rotating basis. And we, and it's something that Debbie holds us to and we work very hard. And most of the groups that get involved in this spend 8 to 10 months. And there are normally parent representatives and administrative representatives along with board members with the different departments to take a really close and critical look at the curriculum all over, across the board. So we appreciate that and this is the time of year that those reports then come forward. So thank you to everybody who does take that effort on. And it's important that we take a look at all areas on a rotating basis and make sure that we are doing all that we need to be doing. So we thank those folks working on that. We move on then to principal reports and let's start tonight with Council Rock and Principal Matt Tappin. No one is ever quite sure what order we're going in. Sometimes I'm not either until I start speaking.
You don't keep us guessing. Good evening, everyone. So this is our last board report for the year. So it's been a pleasure. We certainly will still see you, but the last time that we officially report and hopefully we stay in that sunny zone. The last one that I presented had snow in it because it was still snowing. So I'm hoping that doesn't happen.
You didn't know about that meeting we added?
I didn't know. I didn't know about it. I'm sure I'll get a memo.
I thought it was July, June 30th, I think is, no, I'm just kidding.
So I had been alluding to this. I'm not sure if everyone knows, but construction has started at Council Rock. However, I've alluded to a couple of great projects that people have taken and taken as great learning. So I'm highlighting just a couple of those tonight. There are many, many others. These were just 2 that I had a part in. The first came from 2 2nd grade classes, Mrs. Banbury and Mrs. Linton's class. They each wrote me a letter collectively asking me. The most tragic one is Mrs. Banbury's class who faced the Rainbow Playground and we've talked about it. And for those of you who don't know, it was crumpled pretty early on in, and then it was left. Almost like a, like a playground graveyard and the children had to stare at it. Until I did finally, it was my first request of our construction people to please just get that out because it was a bad reminder.
Remove, please remove the remains.
Please remove it. But they had a pretty visceral reaction to that and they had it outside their window. So Mrs. Banbury and Mrs. Linton teamed up to kind of turn it into a great project where they actually wrote poems about how they felt about the Rainbow Playground, their favorite memories of it, which piece of equipment was their favorite. And then she, they painted, but then she challenged them to actually, since trying to focus on the positive, that we would have new playgrounds. They didn't really realize that time sentence isn't all there, that they would never play on it unless they came back as 5th graders. But to help to design, so they turned it into a STEM project where they designed what they would like to see in the new playgrounds and then invited me to come. I actually toured their classroom, so here are some examples. And their imagination and ingenuity, it was unbelievable. They themed them, there were castle themes, there were game, game themes. There were, but I was most impressed with a lot of the discussion about diversity and equity within it and making sure that all access, kids had all access. So there was talk about how to make swings that were accessible for students who might be in a wheelchair, how to make the playground something that someone who was blind or deaf would be able to enjoy and participate in. So I took notes so that I can bring them back to our architects'. This is not part of the project that has been finalized yet. They also had several things that Lou would have a heart attack and, you know, they had zip lines and they had, and they said it would be fine, Mr. Tappin. We'll have a foam pit that kids can drop into. And I helped them process why that might not be, you know, why that might be a problem or a ball pit that they have. But they also had these on display then for their parents for the ice cream social and they were able to then take them home. But it was a really awesome use of the situation, the construction that is there that has not been too disruptive, but is actually awesome, really great learning. And then the second was kindergarten classes. Ms. Flanagan's class and Mrs. Mugnolo's class actually each piloted a science, a science unit this year as we're kind of in flux with our science units on forces in motion. And they did observation of all of the equipment that is out there to talk about which forces were they pushing, pulling, lifting? And construction people came in and gave talks to the kindergarteners and interacted with them and told them about the vehicles and it was amazing. I was then also invited in to share a little bit about what, because that's one thing I realized, our kids don't have, we've done a lot of PR for adults and the adults who are interested about what our new building is going to look like. Our kids don't have much of that sense. So to show them what some of the plans are, some of the schematics, some of what it looks like and what the hallways will look like and the classrooms. And they were mesmerized because the kindergarteners will be there for the opening in 2021. So exciting. So just a couple of examples where some, you know, yep, it can be a little bit disruptive, but amazing things are being done in terms of turning this awesome event into learning and the kids are really engaged in it and the teachers are totally engaged in it. So outside of construction, we celebrated Earth Week at the end of April and these are some beautiful pictures that Dan Goldman took. I want to make sure he gets credit because I took some with my phone. They don't compare to his beautiful photography. So we had 3 birds come from Wild Wings and actually talked with all of our kids about, our focus was air this year. And then we did a collection for Wild Wings and delivered that to them. So thanks to Wild Wings and the district for making that happen. And then probably the most exciting part of my presentation is I reported to you that we embarked on the journey to become an International Habits of Mind school. Well, much to our surprise, about 2 weeks ago, we were contacted by Ben Akallik, who is one of the 2 founders of the Habits of Mind Institute, to say that after reviewing our application and we had some site visits from some of their folks, that they would like to right now give us the distinction. So we have earned as of right now, the international, we are an International Habit of Mind community of excellence. Now, to put it in perspective, we found that out and thought that we would be planning this 2 years out the road, this huge celebration that we plan. Well, we're going to be doing it June 19th because they'd like to do it. But to put it in perspective, only 14 schools in the United States have earned this award. 4 in the eastern United States, 2 downstate. But we are very proud that we will be the very first primary school to earn this distinction. So we'd like to make sure, I'm going to fast forward a little. Wednesday, the 19th, we will send out formal invitations, but we'd like hopefully the board to save that date. We will be doing a full day celebration at Council Rock involving 2 different assemblies so that our morning and afternoon kindergarteners can both be present for it, where we will be awarded with that, hopefully lots of activities. Ben Akallik will actually be onsite to give us that award. And just a culmination of some amazing work, you know, over the last 6 years, we found out we're in our 6th year of this. But really honored to have been on that journey. So thanks to everybody who's been involved. Judy Wegman is here, but many other friends who at Council Rock who have helped that. So other upcoming events, on Tuesday, next Tuesday, the 14th, Dr. Rio and I will be presenting together about placement and transition to French Road. It's always a great PTSA meeting and often well-attended. That is at noon at FRES, so not at Council Rock. Friday, the 17th, just a reminder that it is an early release day and our kindergarten morning class will attend, which means kindergarten will dismiss at its regular time. 1st and 2nd grade will dismiss at 11:30. No school on Monday, the 27th. Friday, the 31st, our kindergartners will eat at lunch and have their first, eat lunch at school and have their first experience eating in the cafeteria they will not see again because it will be the last time the cafeteria will be used. But they will get the gist of how to go through the line, which will be the same. This is also a really pretty big change and a big lift for my staff and I appreciate all their support. Friday, the 7th, was scheduled to be our play day and usually that's in the backfield at Council Rock. So we had to do some creative thinking. Lou helped me with that. We are actually combining the play day and the hot dog roast. So another day to put on your calendar, June 7th, and it's going to be held at Brookside School. So we will be utilizing the large campus there. Kristen Cooper, who's here, has been instrumental in taking her amazing play day and putting it over there. We'll bus students over there for part of the day and then they'll finish the day with hot dog roast or they'll start their afternoon at the hot dog roast and finish their day with play day. So we're working out the logistics and for parents at home, I've sent home information about it, but more information will come from your teachers because there will be a specific plan kind of for each class that will get communicated about where to meet, what time, things like that. But we're, cross those fingers and look to the heavens for sun that day because that's going to be the only day. We don't have a rain day just because of how much, how many logistics that is. The Recreation Department has been super. because of how much, how many logistics that is. The recreation department has been supercooperative with us in keeping their classes to a minimum so that we can really have the whole campus to ourselves. So we appreciate that. And then again, Wednesday, the 19th, our International Habits of Mind Certification Celebration Day. So we are excited about that. Any questions?
That's fantastic, Matt. Thank you so much. So many great things. And you should be proud of that building and everybody there. And I think one of the things that's so incredible is taking the, you know, leave it to our teachers and staff to take the construction project, driven by the thoughts and minds of our youngest ones, to make positive learning experiences. And that will go on now for the next couple of years. And I can think back to some of the conversation we had with some parents concerned that their child was going to have a disrupted education during this period of time. They're going to have a bonus education, I think, those students going through. And so, great work, and we really appreciate that. So thank you very much. Thanks. Next up, I guess we'll stay in order tonight, because Allison's ready. Dr. Rio and French Road.
Hi, Matt made that choice. So we have a beautiful picture that Lani Mazurowski took that I had to steal from her, because it's awesome, Rainbow over French Road last week, transitioning to spring. We are going back to March to something that was really special that I have to talk about again, even though it's on our website, it's been posted in a couple of places. We had an awesome fourth grade student from Ms. Kozov's class, who really took to heart something that happened in the school. And one of the students in her classroom called another one the R word. And she was totally disturbed by this, because she'd never heard anyone say that word before, and found that it was really important to spread inclusion instead of exclusion of kids. So on her own, with the support of Ms. Kozov, and working with me and her parents, she came up with an assembly for every grade level in March. And we spread the word inclusion. We worked with best buddies to have some guest speakers come to talk about their experiences in school, or their siblings' experiences in school. And Nora facilitated the whole thing. So it was pretty awesome, because she's only in fourth grade. So all of the kids in our school signed a pledge that day and agreed that they would spread the word to end the word. So that was pretty awesome. These are still hanging up around our school. And other kids, after they saw Nora, this is the best part, started coming to me with like these ideas of what they, we should be doing. So one of our students who has cystic fibrosis, Nate DeBrail in fourth grade, has a penny drive going right now, where he put the whole thing together again himself, came on the announcements, is collecting pennies, checks in every day. And he's doing that to raise money for cystic fibrosis. And then I had other kids come to me to say, I want to do a collection for homeless. Like, this is just spreads for kids. And the projects that they're coming up with are so awesome. And it's because they see other kids doing those things around the school. So it's definitely contagious in an awesome and amazing way. So we're really proud of Nora, and then her work that has spread to other kids around FRES. Our student council worked really hard to find our yearbook cover contest winner. They put together a whole contest and displayed all of the covers that were submitted in the hall at FRES, so that kids could appreciate all of the hard work that French Road kids did. So that's all of our covers in the hallway, our student council kids. And there is our cover for this year, our winner, Eva DeJesus in fifth grade, in Mrs. Telx's class. And they did a lot of work with that. I was really proud of them. Mrs. Dubois's class had a teleconference with two engineers from NASA just last week. One of them was one of her former classmates, so she has tapped into her relationship with him. But he really spent a lot of time talking to the kids about what kinds of skills they have right now, and things that they could get into in the future. And it was pretty awesome. They talked and learned a lot about, you know, what actually happens in NASA, you know, the mathematical stuff, the science behind it. And the kids were really into that. It was great. We also had our Science and Social Studies Fair, which is probably one of my favorite things that we do at French Road. We had all sorts of different experiments and exhibits around whatever kids were interested in. It's really completely open to kids coming and sharing wherever their thinking is, and sharing with others. So we had a full cafeteria two nights at the end of March. Last week, we had Leah Malik, a Holocaust survivor, come to speak with our fifth graders around human rights. So we have Human Rights Day coming up in a little over two weeks. And on that day, the fifth graders each take a different, classrooms take different types of human rights that have been violated throughout history, and they learn about them and share in some interactive way with their classmates around the whole grade level what's going on. So as part of that unit, and in preparation for the classes that are working around the Holocaust, we had Leah come on Friday. And the kids were so amazing, you could literally hear a pin drop in the cafeteria as she was talking to them. She told her story and allowed them an opportunity to ask questions. They were very thoughtful. The kids were great. And she was wonderful to be there for our kids and share that experience with them. We have had a lot of coding going on this year with a Sphero ball. If you haven't seen it, it's that small little ball, in one picture it's lit up blue, and one it's not. But Stefana Manacino, our math, science, technology instructional coach, purchased a set of these through a BEF grant this year, and has been using them in classrooms and in an after-school coding club for fifth grade students. So it's pretty awesome, because in the picture that is on the bottom there with the map of the solar system, those are kids in Corey Gottfried's class, fifth grade, who are coding the Sphero ball to move through the atmosphere to go to different planets. And when it gets to a different planet, it will stop, and they can code it to change to a different color, or do something when it arrives there. So there's a connection to the fifth grade science curriculum. In addition, in Mary Ann Pettit's fourth grade class, she's taken, working with Stefana, connecting it to her social studies unit. And the kids have created landforms in New York State, and they have to code the Sphero ball to drive through all of the different landforms that kids have made. And so they use the iPads to write the code. They're really into it. You can see kids working on it here. But when you're with the kids, it's really interesting and exciting, and they're way smarter than I am with this stuff. So it's great to see them doing it. And connecting it to curriculum is pretty great, too. We had music in our Schools Month in March, so our hallway is full of notes of what our students love about music. And one of the things that also happened was our Red Band and New Horizons concert, which is great to hear the students come together with community members and play a piece for the first time. They just do a quick practice, and then they play a piece together. And they have an opportunity to talk together about music, about interests, whatever they want to talk about. It's always interesting to hear what our kids share with them. And, or, and actually, I was in the mini-odd, and they were trying to guess how old everybody was in the room. And that was interesting, too. So, oh, we got to get out of here. We had our Irish Dance Assembly, but what we like to highlight is that we have a lot of FRES kids dancing in there. So it's really neat to watch them in a different light, doing something that they're good at in front of all of their peers and classmates. Our fifth grade celebration is on June 20th. So moving into my calendar events now, but I threw this in here, because I've been putting this out with my e-news, but we have a lot going on. So it's starting in the classrooms at 3 o'clock with students and families who will be able to see some work that's been, you know, a reflection of what fifth grade students have been working on throughout the year. And then at the end of the school day, we'll move outside into a picnic with a DJ and food trucks, games, and it'll be a lovely time. Parents and families can come anytime, up till 6:00 PM, when we're done. But, you know, you can stop in for a little bit. You can stay for the whole time. Lots of other events coming up. We have all of our concerts coming up, starting tomorrow with Red Band and Fifth Grade Chorus, and going all the way through every performing group we have until the end of the school year. So that will be great. We have FRES Night at Red Wings coming up on the 22nd. We also have a PTSA meeting with the principal on the 24th, with our volunteer reception being that day, too. We're looking forward to our 2003 movie night in June, which we will be showing Charlotte's Web. And Field Day, fifth grade celebration, field trips. And then we're going to the last day, because this is the last board report. That's it. Any questions?
No, thank you so much, Allison. All the great things that happened this time of the year, and then the, the, all that to come on that final stretch, right, as we get down toward the end of June. So thank you so much for sharing. Next up, we'll hear from 12 Corners Middle School, Rob Thomas.
Thanks, Mark. Dr. Rio, I was just wondering what time I should come over on the 20th to do the speech that I get to do each year.
No speech.
Okay.
I think she said it ends at 6:00, so 6:30 would be good, Rob. We'll come and listen to you if you want.
I'll record it for everybody. So a lot's been going on at the middle school, but I've just got a snippet of some of the things we've been doing. Our student athletes are busy after school every day. I go visit them on the nice days after school, like this baseball game yesterday. But we have 252 students participating this spring, and you can see the totals for the year. There are a lot of students in seventh and eighth grade that are active after school. And after listening to the phys ed presentation and thinking about all the benefits the kids derive from this experience, it takes a lot of support from the families and the coaches, for sure. But having the kids out there means a lot to them and their, their health, physical and mental health. Career Day was organized. This was just last Friday. Amy Moran, our fax teacher, did a fabulous job of planning and preparing for this event, bringing in over 20 professionals to talk about their career and the path that took them there. Amy had some help from Mary Ann Solomon and Danielle Edmonds. It was a first-class presentation. The students chose three different presenters to watch. Dr. Baker's husband presented as well, and many other people with connections to our Brighton community. A great day for everyone. Our seventh grade DC trip was a while ago now in March, but 280 students on six buses heading to DC and back over the course of three days. You can't help but have some stories to talk about when you get back. And it was beautiful weather, great experience. Blossoms were just coming out, and we had a great time. And it matches so well with the honor flight that we're doing with the veterans and the flights they've taken from the Rochester International Airport. We're going there on Sundays to support the veterans as they return. And we are still getting thank you cards from the veterans that we wrote letters to. And they come visit our school and our students, and are coming again soon. So a great job by Catherine Leebul, who helps coordinate that. Our best buddies were active, too. We had a Dress Like Your Best Buddy Day going into the spring recess. Students, if they wanted to, they could donate some money to support the Best Buddies Walk that happened this past Saturday at the Total Sports Experience. Sarah Potter and Lori Whiter are organizing that for our school, and a lot of students are involved. They've even presented at our faculty meeting, the students in this club. So a really nice experience. Vaping presentations were held for our eighth grade students by two physicians from the University of Rochester. Fantastic information. It was so good, we invited them back to a PTSA meeting with the principal one evening, and when they presented to the parents. And that presentation is attached to our website now. So parents, even if you have sixth and seventh graders, please learn all you can about the dangers and the obstacles that we're facing in this truly dangerous world of vaping. It's not the safe alternative to smoking that the marketing promotes. It's very, very dangerous and addictive for our kids. And we've, and it's so easy to conceal. We've got to let people know and make sure that they know about it. We've had some construction at the middle school, too. On the left is our new Cavern Cafe. It has a nice echo quality to it. I can hear what kids are talking about seven tables away from me. And easy to make, yeah, there are a lot of advantages.
This is very in right now, by the way.
Yeah, just so you know. We also have the Tunnel of Learning. They're learning about electricity, and HVAC, and lighting, and see if they can tag the lights on the way down the hallway. But we're really excited about it. It's actually, the kids don't even notice it. They walk right through their days. Construction people have been great communicating anything that they're doing. And we're really looking forward to the end product as we get through our first big stage this summer.
If our first and second graders could do it, our middle school is going to do it, too.
You would think so, yes.
Good job.
This is Dave Lewis, who received the PTSA Life Membership Award last Wednesday night, is it now? And Katie Lambert also did, and Shelley Fitzgerald, and her husband was there to represent her, her and her family. Just a great event. And I was, just happened to be in the atrium when Leslie Seltzer brought in the announcement to Dave, and he was just tickled pink, as were the, as was Katie as well, and Shelley's family. A really, really special night, and a great thing to be part of. Upcoming events tomorrow is Bike to School Day. My forecast of sunny and 70 was half right. It's going to be sunny and about 40 tomorrow morning. So, but walk, bike to school, any way you can get non-motorized, and the kids will sign in and be eligible for some simple treats if they participate tomorrow morning. May 11th is our Clean Sweep, again sunny and 70 on Saturday. We'll be boarding buses at French Road and spending time cleaning up around Brighton, and then coming back to French Road for the wrap-up. The 15th is our fifth grade orientation for the incoming class, so it'll be next year's sixth graders. We have two times, 4:30 or 6:30. Parents and students should attend. We talk a little bit about the school, what to expect, have tours, and get to meet a lot of the students who are applying to be the TCMS drawing mentors for next year. So they're currently seventh graders in training to be mentors as eighth graders. Our eighth grade Spanish and German, German trips leave on the 16th, next Thursday, and come back Saturday evening. A lot of participation in those, too. Our French trip has already come and gone to Quebec. And that's about it for the middle school for now.
Wonderful. Thanks again, Rob. We appreciate it. All the things going on there. Every, every building now, as we sprint to the end of June, right?
That's right.
Brighton High School, Dr. Townhall.
Congratulations to Council Rock on your award there, man, and all of Council Rock folks. Really, really well done. So seven weeks of classes left, our seniors, this is from the fall, they've grown a lot, ready to graduate on June 25th, coming up. They're getting antsy for sure. Throughout the second semester, so from after midterms right through, we still have two more presentations coming up in May. We've had guest speakers come in. We call them Future Fridays during flex. Students can come in and listen to professional people in our Brighton community. Most of them are right within Brighton. Some are parents, some are very close friends of some of our counselors, to talk about a variety of professions and things that they can go into, from medicine, all the way to be an electrician, to business and finance. And they were presenting throughout the month of February, March, April, and May. Well-attended, several of those events, and our counselors organized that. Thank you to Courtney Stern for doing a lot with it. Our April 8th Conference Day, we were lucky to have a conference day and not have to be scoring tests. We had four different breakout sessions. Teachers could choose two of the four, two related to restorative practices, one participating in Privilege Walk, and one on sharing scenarios that we've dealt with at Brighton at the high school, whether it's in a classroom or out in the hallway, and how would a teacher respond and act to a particular situation, a variety of diversity-type issues. One thing that was great about this day is that we had students participating in two of the four sessions, one on the restorative circle, and the other students leading the privilege walk. The, the students from Mosaic Club helped out. They pretty much did the same thing in the fall at the Rock to Change, so they offered that up to faculty. And it was very well-attended. And, you know, we had almost 85 people respond to our survey, and 80, 83% were extremely too satisfied with what we offered them. So that was one of the highest, I don't know, positive rates we've seen from the, the surveys we give after PD. Just some of the pictures. So our diversity scenarios were led by administrators and professional learning team members. Our restorative circles with faculty were led by two of our counselors. The Fish Bowl, where faculty got to watch students and faculty participate in a real community circle, led by some of our PLT members and counselors. And the privilege walk, pretty much led by our students from Mosaic Club. We do have three dogs, three therapy dogs at the high school. Thank you to the board for adopting that policy. We have Possum, Lily, and Atticus. And I'll tell you what, when all three of them are there and in the office, we had a parent come by for a tour. They're not a Brighton resident yet. Thank goodness, they do like dogs. But they were in the office waiting to be seen by me to talk about the school. And the mother and her son were sitting there, and all of a sudden, I think it was Atticus came in first, then Possum, then Lily, and they're all there, just greeting everybody. And they love dogs, and that certainly helped sell them on wanting to come to Brighton High School next year. But it's been a great addition to the school, so far, so good. Very positive comments. Our Ren-Brighton Exchange, we had 31 students and four faculty members go to France over the April break and the week after. Outstanding students, great trip. This is the second time we've been with this particular school in the city of Ren, and after having a partnership with another school for over 30 years. So we have two great trips under our belt, and just a fabulous time. And our first-ever AP Euro trip to Eastern Europe, 16 students, two faculty members, went off to Eastern Europe to tour a variety of countries and areas that they're learning, actually, in the AP Euro class. It's the first time we've ever done that trip. They had a phenomenal experience as well. Several things coming up. We actually have our first Regents exam on June 15. We actually have our first Regents exam on June 3rd. Sounds weird. It's one of those odd, early exams for the global studies curriculum is changing, so that's an alternative test. All of our students will be taking that on June 3rd. We have our award ceremony on June 7th, going back to BHS Gym instead of the auditorium because that's completely under construction. So that'll be back in the gym. Last day of classes, countdown if you're available, if you want to come by to see the seniors on that last day. June 20th, we're continuing the senior parade at Council Rock and French Road. And then our exams, rehearsal, and graduation coming up. Clean sweep is this weekend. Looking forward to hopefully decent weather from what it looks like. But starting back way in 2002 where we were cleaning up the high school grounds in some neighborhoods to send some partnership and some goodwill towards our neighbors, that's kind of where it started. Then middle school and the high school got together and then finally then the town picked up and started doing a clean sweep and been doing it ever since. Lot of activities, a lot of concerts coming up as well, similar to French Road. And of course, our budget vote and spaghetti dinner.
Budget vote.
And spaghetti dinner on May 21st, if you didn't know that, starting at 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM, and the Allo's Dinner at 6:00 PM.
Yep, yep.
Okay. And Spring Fest is going to still happen. We won't have to bus everybody over to Brookside. We're going to do it right at the high school. And we're squeezing into the softball field and right out back, we're still going to have all of our activities and looking forward to, you know, a pretty nice Spring Fest this year, so. Actually, the alumni association is providing t-shirts to all the kids. We have food trucks for the first time in honor of our Blue Ribbon Award, still continuing the celebration. It's a celebration of a year. And, oh, there's one more big, oh, and to end, because we don't have the auditorium for the Faculty Talent Show, we've hired, well, we've gotten some donations to hire a drumming band. If you ever heard of Downbeat Percussion, they perform all over Rochester. They're coming to kind of end the day in the gym. They have students, they get students involved and the faculties, so we're looking forward to kind of any little non-traditional way, but should be good anyway.
I'm wondering if the principal of the Habits of the Mind School of Excellence would like any kind of rebuttal time? Know what you're all saying.
He said, they're forging the ring as he speaks.
Ms. Wegman has pointed out to me, it is the Habits of the Mind that make all other awards and recognition possible throughout the district.
And I agree with that.
This is a kid rising up, so.
Absolutely right.
Thank you, Ms. Wegman, for that.
Yeah, yeah. 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 Thank you so much, our building principals and all of you that work hard with staff to put these reports together and the teacher input. And it's just such a fantastic thing and, you know, it's one of those things I want to send an email blast myself after every meeting like this and just ask people to spend 20 minutes on the YouTube channel and watch the four reports and just to see what goes on, just a snippet, just a quick look at the great things that happen in each of our buildings every single day. So thank you so much. The other thing that strikes me tonight is thank you all for the efforts that you make and will continue to make during our K-12 facilities project because we planned for this for a long period of time. We're well underway, as everyone points out. Some buildings a little further along than others, but eventually it will be everybody. And, you know, we knew and continue to know that all of you are going to make this work in the best way possible for students and staff and families to positively get through it. At the other end, we'll have modernized facilities throughout. So thank you so much for all of your efforts and the ability to shift and be flexible and deal with things as they occur. So I'm going to record that and we're going to play that about 20 more times between now and the next two and a half years. So thank you again. Just a couple more final items this evening. I'm not sure if I'm getting anything over here, if I just have a little tickle in my throat, but I'm moving over further. May we have a motion, please, to approve our consent agenda?
Someone.
Moved by Jolene and seconded by Marv. Included our consent agenda and we love to acknowledge a gift this evening from a Brighton resident and actually one of our retired teachers, Gene Cantori-Green of a Yamaha saxophone and carrying case to the visual and performing arts department. So we thank her for that generous gift. And I also make note to folks who may have an interest that we are also approving the schedule for 2019, 2020 Board of Education meeting dates. Then that will, that's being approved right now and that will be eventually posted for our schedule into the entirety of the next year. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Board members, any other items of business this evening or anything of note that we need this evening? Dr. McGowan? Then I will just take one quick second for folks. You've received, those of you at home and the members of our public, you've received a couple of emails in the last couple of days. I remind everybody that the budget newsletter from the district by tomorrow, I believe, will be in every residence mailbox. It is also fully available online, all the material. There's a link. The virtual newsletter is right there. You can take a look through it. It has all the items with regard to the budget. It also has all the information with regard to Board of Education election. In addition to that, all of the other backing materials and previous presentations around the budget and some of the background material and the whys and how choices ended up being made, that material is all listed on the website also. Additionally, we want to encourage members of the public, if you have any questions about the budget, if you want more information, there's a number of things that you can do. You certainly can email or call me or any of our board members, Dr. McGowan, Mr. Alimo. But also you can come on out. We have four remaining budget open houses scheduled. We have one tomorrow at the evening, 6:00 to 7:00 o'clock, May 8th, that is, here at the central office. And then there's another one on the 13th of May, the 14th of May, and the 20th of May. All of those are shown and listed in the email that went out, I believe, this morning or yesterday, I think Dan sent out, but also are posted on the website. And they're designed to be a one-hour open house. Come, ask questions, ask specific, about specific areas or specific items, or just ask for some further information. So we encourage folks to come on out and understand that fully. And we look forward to continuing to communicate around the budget itself right up through Election Day and the budget vote on May 21st. So thank you, everyone, for that. Then we are completing this evening. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
No motion.
Moved by Karen and seconded by Larry. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, folks. We are adjourned for this evening.